This is the Commissioner meeting of Tuesday, December 21st, 2021 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center, Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo will be absent because that's what they gave me. Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
At this time, I'd ask you all to please rise and join me in a moment of silence and salute to the flag. This evening, I ask that you keep in mind, all of those that we lost here in the county to the COVID pandemic are most vulnerable, especially as we approach the holidays.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D, Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on September 15th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I ask that you please mute your electronic devices. Number five is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Still move.
Second.
Discussion. I want to note that there is an additional item for executive session for number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege in legal services. Is there any other discussion? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. There are no proclamations, certifications, or presentations this evening. There are no public hearings this evening. So we move on to number eight, which is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name and your municipality and your agenda topic for the record. So at this time, I need a motion to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the floor is now open for public comment on agenda items only. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment on agenda items.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is Commissioner comments, and we are going to begin with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I will be very, very short. The four-way stop sign, as we discussed last, last meeting for both Lafayette and Frankfurt, have been installed, and they're up and running. Just, just to give you guys an idea, though, I did get a call from two committeemen, well, one councilman from Lafayette, a committeman from, from Frankfurt, with, with a couple complaints, just that we didn't give them enough notification, which is, is, is very untrue. I talked to Bill Cope and all, and we discussed how much time they had during the study and so on. So I think it's going to work out. I think it's the safety of the public, which their study shows. So anyway, that was it. I just want to give you that tidbit. I met with the DPW on Friday of last week, the Frankfurt DPW. I met, also met with Jay Schwartz and Scott House, who's the head honcho over there. Same, same ideas, you know, low pay, can't find people to work for him. We, they did ask about hazard pay. I told them that we, we are working on that. That's one of our priorities. And that's about it. The garage was a young garage, probably the youngest one we have out there. And it was, it was actually close to home, so it worked out well for me. And that's really about it. I just want to thank all you guys for this year. I had 11 months here with you all. Think we got a lot done. I want to continue doing what we're doing, you know, cut out the bureaucracy and do it my, do it my way, get it done quick, as Mr. Poff loves to hear. But I enjoy, listen, we have a great staff, our administrator, our clerk, engineering with Bill Cope and all, and Tom Drabak with the NJTPA. It's, 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 it's very nice to have the support that we have. And like I said, looking forward to working with all you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yardley.
I have no report, except to say, everybody have a great Christmas, New Year's, and holiday.
Thank you.
Wow.
Deputy Director Fasano.
Well, I, I wish, and I'm sure you wish I could say the same, Ms. Commissioner Yardley, but thank you, Director Fantasia, and thanks to all who are joining us. I'll just start my report by sharing what was just a cool moment, a little more than a week ago. I had the pleasure of joining Commissioner Carney, local officials, company employees, and devoted Wawa enthusiasts, as I'm calling them, at the groundbreaking ceremony for Sussex County's first-ever Wawa location, and the company's northernmost location, located in Frankfurt. And it was exciting to welcome Wawa to Sussex County for more than just their signature coffee and sandwiches, of course. The job creation, the positive economic impact, and the announcement of two additional locations is significant for Sussex County. But we also didn't just welcome a new business to the county. We also welcomed a new community partner for years to come. And no time was wasted in showing that commitment with a contribution to the SCARC Foundation before a shovel was even in the ground. You know, as a kid, being in a Wawa meant that you were down the shore, and it is really cool that those times are changing for kids up here in Sussex County. So I'm really excited to see what the future holds and to welcome Wawa to Sussex County. And although it is the end of the year, I did just want to mention that there's still a lot happening on our agenda tonight specifically, when it comes to the Sussex County Division of Senior Services, which serves our senior and disabled populations, Skylands Ride Assisted Transportation, which provides door-to-door services for our seniors and those who need assistance, and our alcohol and drug addiction services, which are funded through the Division of Community and Youth Services. Many of these items tonight are funded, or partially funded, through grant funding, along with the county funds, which are identified and applied for to support the health and welfare of our seniors and disabled, by ensuring access to nutrition, medical services, socialization, and more. Just a few highlights tonight, for example, include the continuation of the shared service agreements with Franklin, Hope Akon, and Vernon, to provide congregate nutrition, nutrition sites and programs for our seniors, which offer meals, social events, and access and connections to services that they need most. It also includes the continuation of home-delivered meals to homebound seniors, certified home and health aid, chore worker services through Rest Care New Jersey, adult protective services for our most vulnerable older adults, residential maintenance to help seniors stay in their homes through, through Northwest Cap, studies with Skylands Ride to determine how to maximize routes to even more residents, along with investments in substance abuse treatment services, prevention and early intervention services, substance abuse recovery support programs, juvenile substance abuse treatment programs, and referral programs, just to name a few. So although it is the end of the year, these meetings still, what we're doing at these meetings is still really important. All of these programs and the funding that makes them possible, we know are vitally important to our communities, and I'm really happy to see them continued or expanded here tonight. As always, check our website for the latest county websites, county website news and information. And I wish you all a safe and wonderful holiday season and a happy new year. And I thank all of my colleagues up here for a happy year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I am going to start with information from the Sussex County Division of Health. Again, a reminder that Division of Health, in collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy, is offering all three vaccines, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and the Pfizer, in addition to the flu vaccine. We also do our pop-up clinics. There was one today at the Vernon Township Senior Center. I'm going to reach out to Carol Navrit and see if that was our final pop-up in the month of December. Or Greg, are you aware if there is an additional one in the week following Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's?
I, I do not believe there is, but I'll, I'll check, and I'll let you know.
Okay, because actually, a couple individuals from the community did ask if there is. I think you have kids home from school, and, and, you know, college kids and whatnot are asking, so I want to be able to point everyone in the right direction for that. So the first vaccine and boosters are available at no cost during those clinics, and they are walking. So we'll get back to the public regarding the next specific dates. So just to let you know, it seems, testing seems to be very, very important now. We see a little bit of an upswing in cases. So the county still does provide those free tests, either the saliva test through Vault, or the LabCorp test Pixel, which is the nasal swab. They are free. Please visit the county website, and you can order that at no cost to you.
Excuse me, Director.
Yes.
Oh, I'm going to ask Mr. Poff if these, we were the first ones, I think, with this test, to offer it for a mail order, prior to the state and the federal government?
I don't know.
Some of our county partners, those particularly that were provided cares, direct cares funding, which Sussex County was not because of our population, they were offering the, the kits. But yes, as far as the recent initiative from the state, Sussex County has been providing free at-home COVID tests for just about a year now.
And we did that without knowing whether we were going to have funding. So...
At the start. And then when we did receive the state funding, much, much later than everyone else. And it's funny that Greg said, you know, because of our population, and that was always a sticking point for us, for not receiving those funds. Apparently, 140,000 people must have been COVID-proof, because you had to hit 500,000 to get any money. So the 140 couldn't possibly experience what the 500 were. So that was an epic fail of our, you know, state and, and national representatives. But I digress, and not our D-24 representatives, might I add, they were with us fighting for that. But anyhow, moving along, the COVID-19 activity level report indicates that the entire state is coded orange, which is considered a high activity level. So in Sussex County, we have a total of 22,172 cases since the start of the pandemic. So a little over 15% of our population, with a total of 362 deaths. Now, hospitalizations, that seems to be a question everybody kind of asks, to see where we are at. So far in December, county has 55 hospitalizations. In the month of November, we had 62. In October, we had our high of 69. So we seem to be holding steady, maybe a bit tad lower, which is actually promising, that hospitalizations don't seem to be exploding in comparison to the prior months. There are 26 outbreaks in the county, one in one acute care facility, five in long-term care facilities of staff and residents. So you know, we have 19 facilities like that in the county, so six, one-third, have some type of outbreak. There's outbreaks in 18 schools and daycares and two businesses. And, and please keep in mind that when we say outbreaks, those are cases that are directly traced back to spread from that facility or building, not community spread, where you may have it, and some coworker brought it in from home, and, and not where it's not spread actually in that location. So also, a lot of people are asking about the variant report. So just yesterday, the New Jersey Department of Health released the variant report. And according to that report, as of the week, the first week in December, ending that week, the Delta variant now is represented by 97.9% of cases that are tested. Other variants are 1.9, and the Omicron variant is .2. So I know, as we, you know, go up the Greek alphabet and zip through, what the information that we seem to be getting, scientific information, is that Omicron may be more contagious, but also is much milder. So as, to date, as of this morning, nationally, there are no reports of a death due to the Omicron variant. So that is actually very promising. So if you have any, if you would like any information about COVID-19, please visit the Sussex County website, sussex nj.us. You can always call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1211. And again, it has always been the position of this board to share public information. One of the largest departments we have is Health and Human Services, and it is our duty, our role and responsibility to provide this information to the public, regardless of any personal feelings one may have. I just remind the public that it is your choice to, to take advantage of these services, or to not take advantage of these services. But again, it's always been the position of the board to provide this information to you, and you are quite capable of making choices in, in concert with medical professionals, as to what is best for you and your family. The Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council has our annual meeting on January 14th, so I'm looking forward to attending that. That is the general meeting. Also, yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with our confidential assistant, Samantha Gabriel, where we reviewed some of our plans, upcoming plans for communication enhancements and improvements as we go into the new year. So we'll hear more about that at the reorganization meeting, but I'm really looking forward to working alongside her, and, you know, elevating what we are doing now, in getting information out, both from a social media perspective, and then from traditional print media and, and spoken word as well. Commissioner Fasano and I attended a budget meeting for a couple hours this afternoon, with administrator and our finance team, and we continue to, to plug away at this. We received a bit of information that was somewhat difficult, as we know. We know that insurance costs are, are increasing, but also, one thing of note, that I think is important, because we've talked about this in the past budget cycles, each year, state of New Jersey informs each county of what their portion is of state mental health facility payments are. And it was very, very jarring to get our adjustment this year, because it's about a 55% increase from last year, to the tune of nearly half a million dollar increase is Sussex County's payment now to the state of New Jersey for those services. So again, sobering, the causes, we can, we can speculate. I, I would assume that there is a severe need for more mental health services for residents in light of the pandemic and all of the damage that has been done to the public due to this pandemic and governmental tepid, feckless response. But that's for another day. But again, we will feel the sting of that in the county budget, to make sure that our residents get the services that they absolutely deserve and the support that they need. But we definitely will have to take a look at the budget and, and make some adjustments for this, for this. So also, I just would like to say that this is my last meeting for, you know, sitting in this seat for the 2021 year. In 2020, Sylvia and I were, were together, you know, as the pandemic broke, then, you know, leading the board through this pandemic with, with Anthony and, and with the, the rest of the members of the board. It's not something, again, that comes with an instruction manual, but I'm proud of the work that we did, and I'm proud of the services that we were able to provide, you know, with, with, again, strong support from District 24, but weak support in general from the Trent Democrats and from our congressional representatives. So this board will not, will not ever be quiet about demanding what we need for the county. It has been an honor and a pleasure to be able to serve in this role. I look forward to being sworn in, Commissioner Carney, on January 5th, at our reorg. And I look very, very forward, again, to working with Ms. Gabriel to take a stronger role in communication from the board. And that's my report for tonight. So moving on to number 10, approval of the consent agenda. And there are many things on this consent agenda that pertain to Health and Human Services, if you see. So I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, A through U. So the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Sussex, has reviewed the consent agenda, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove one of those items from A to U, to be considered separately, please do so now.
So you're talking, can I have something on 12 resolutions? You want me to go up that far now?
Uh, no, we're just going through A to U on number 10. So just for consent. Okay? All right, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, A through U.
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number 11 is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, December 8th, 2021, and executive session, December 8th, 2021. We ask Commissioner Patillo and Yardley to abstain due to meeting absence. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and executive session.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Terry, would you please call the roll for this, so we have this on record?
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Abstain.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Pass. Number 12, appointments and/or resignations. I need, I need a motion to adopt the appointments, A and B.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Terry, please call the roll.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Number 13, resolutions.
Can I get clarification?
Yes, sir.
On authorizing a resolution, oh.
Okay, so let me get to the discussion portion of it.
Okay.
So I need a motion to adopt the resolutions, A through R.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And then, under discussion, Commissioner Yardley, you said, oh.
Yeah, just so I can get clarification on the process here with, with these attorneys. These are the attorneys that are doing the, the way you read this, is the attorneys that are doing the enforcement on violations of waste for SCUMA, is that correct?
Yes, this is the agreement that's been in place for some time with the Municipal Utilities Authority. This, this particular firm is the firm that has provided these services, specifically Tom Pearl is the attorney, who is assisting us and the MUA. In addition, their services are also rendered for general environmental and health matters for the year as well.
So, took a while to understand this one. If there's a violation of waste flow, and there's a penalty, the county or SCUMA is entitled to those legal fees. So my question is, are we, are they collecting those legal fees on those issues, and are we just paying for environmental services?
I, I would have to, I would have to speak with the Division of Health to confirm that those legal costs are being recouped.
Okay. If you would do that, this is in effect, I'm not going to hold it up.
Okay, any other discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt resolution A through D.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Number 15, financials, a resolution for the payment of the bills list, December 22nd, 2021. I need a motion to pay the bills list.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Terry, please call the roll.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Number 16, personnel, a resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of December 21st, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Terry, please call the roll.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Number 17 is our administrative report from Mr. Poff.
Thank you, Director. Just to follow up from your report, today was, in fact, the last clinic of the year. If anyone is looking for vaccination in the interim, they certainly can contact the Division of Health, who will be able to point them in the right direction as far as securing both the seasonal flu, as well as the COVID-19 vaccine. There will be no weekly report prepared next week, prepared or distributed next week, as next week is shortened due to the holidays. So that will resume after the first of the year. As was mentioned, we did have an operating budget committee meeting today, and have got some constructive feedback, and will be gathering the additional information that was requested, so that we can continue to make refinements on the proposed 2022 budget. And the Capital Budget Projects Committee, that meeting is being scheduled for early next year, and there's some additional information that we need to obtain, both in terms of the capital project for the design and construction of the Force Main, which will replace the treatment facility at the Homestead, as well as the county continuing to incur expenses associated with its site remediation program. And just wish everybody a very happy holiday and a healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 18, county council report.
Nothing for public sessions, just Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Number 19, unfinished business. I don't know necessarily, this remains unfinished, because it's the American Rescue Plan funding, but I did communicate with Mr. Steinhardt, our counsel, who advised me that prior to the closing of the calendar year, we would have some additional information regarding their use of the American Rescue Plan funding, now that we do have the...
That email gets to you today.
I did not read that email today, but I was in the budget meeting, so that could be.
I know I got it today. Actually, printed copies. I left them in my backpack before my car. So I do have them. When we get to executive, I'll hand them out. But I have them by email, so I'll definitely, I'll circulate with everybody the email.
Perfect. So this evening, we will be receiving that information, so it's even better than by year's end, because today is what, the 21st?
I'm having the next 30 seconds.
Nicely done.
Carefully.
All right, fair. So again, we did receive, I did receive a media inquiry about where we were in the process, and I just wanted to let the public know that we did have the survey results, which we shared at our last, at our last public meeting. Information has been given to council, and council now has an update for us. So we are moving along with that. So number 20 is new business. Are there any items for new business from the commissioner? Okay, number 21, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name and municipality for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment on non-agenda items.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the floor is open for public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment on non-agenda items and return to regular business.
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number 22, reminders. Please check the county website at www.sussex nj.us for our upcoming meeting schedules. And again, our reorganization meeting is scheduled for right here on Wednesday, January 5th, at the college at 6:00 PM. All are welcome, so we hope that you will join us as, as we move forward into the new year. And I would like to wish everybody a wonderful Christmas, a very happy holiday season. I know Hanukkah was a bit earlier in the month. If you celebrate Kwanzaa, whatever it is that you celebrate, celebrate in style, share with your family, and have a safe and happy holiday and new year. So we are on to executive session, number 23. This is a resolution providing for an executive closed session, not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12.
Whereas the subject matter is about to be discussed, may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B. And whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance... Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. Item number two, matters where the release of information would impair the right to receive funds, and that is the regionalization of certain government services. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, topics legal services, PBA 138 Prosecutor's Unit, PBA 138 Sheriff's Unit. Then we have matters eight, relating to the employment relationship personnel policies. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed sessions may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall...
Not.
Not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and therefore the Board will adjourn its meeting after executive session.
Thank you. So I need a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Thank you for joining us. Merry Christmas. Get home safe.
Good night.
Thank you.